Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Shoemaker is not present.
Kellogg?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Poland is not present. Hofstadter?
Here.
And Khan?
Here.
Can we have a motion to excuse Devon and Bob? Devon is on vacation and Bob is ill.
Second. Khan?
Vaughn?
Hi.
Khan?
Hi.
Kellogg?
Yes.
And Hofstadter?
Hi.
All right. I have a proclamation to read honoring Nancy Irving. Whereas Nancy Irving was born on December 11th, 1924, and we will be celebrating her 100th birthday this year. And whereas the village of Millersburg recognizes Nancy Irving for her longevity of life and her lifelong commitment to family, friends, and community. And whereas, in consideration of Nancy Irving's longevity of life, representing a century of experiences, growth, and changes, I, Mayor Kelly Hoffey, congratulate her on her 100th birthday. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kelly Hoffey, Mayor of the Village of Millersburg in the state of Ohio, on behalf of the mayor and council and the residents of the village of Millersburg, do hereby recognize and extend to Nancy Irving our sincere congratulations on achieving this milestone in life and further wish her all the best and continued health and happiness in the years to come. Happy birthday, Nancy. All right. Community events. Thanksgiving week, so this Saturday is Small Business Saturday. Our downtown shops will be open and hopefully booming. So come on down, shop our downtown. I was downtown Saturday night and there are things to buy in every store for every budget. Every budget. You can get stuff for $5, you can get stuff for $30, you can get stuff for $100. The Skyview, Friends of Skyview Benefit Dinner is December 7th, December 15th. At 2:00 PM is the Christmas Parade through town and Santa Claus. We do not have any new updates on the bicentennial. Do we have any visitors wish to address council this time? All right. Can I have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes, please?
Still moved.
Second. Khan?
Hofstadter?
Hi.
Excuse me. Khan?
Hi.
Kellogg?
Yes.
And Vaughn?
Hi.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
So I wanted to ask about... So I remember the last meeting, we talked about the F-550 truck for the street department. But it wasn't, our discussion, because I can remember everything that was talked about, but it wasn't in the minutes.
You're absolutely right. I can absolutely add that.
Okay.
I just didn't know. Yeah, I can add something about that. I can read.
Because I did ask whatever was appropriate. I went down the garage and everything, so I didn't want that. But when I, I could remember what we talked about, and then when I went in there, it wasn't in there.
Okay.
Everything else need to talk about, but that about the truck wasn't in there, so I would like that added.
Pardon. Okay. Any other additions or corrections? Can we have a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve. Khan?
Second.
Khan?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Hi.
Kellogg?
Yes.
And Hofstadter?
Hi.
All right. Bill Resolution 2024-24. Are there any questions on the bills? The bills have a different total. The total for the bills is $200,347.41. Is that just, was that just an adding here?
I already was paying Quill and I found another little bill, so I put it in there.
Added in there. Okay, perfect. Hearing nudged, we have a motion to pay the bills.
Still moved.
Hofstadter?
Hi.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Hi.
And Khan?
Hi.
All right. Nate?
All right. The Design Review Board will meet on the 4th. It's at 6:00 PM. They've got certificate of appropriateness applications from Main Street Bank, formerly Wayne Savings, for their signage. Millersburg Dental for an addition, and then Millersburg Christian Church for their new building project. Planning zoning will then meet at 6:30 on the 4th to review Millersburg Christian Church's site plan and variance applications, as well as a rezoning request from Brody D. Haas for two lots on Coast Street. The nothing honor resurfacing. The street department storage building. I put in there no other update, but they were there today working on, starting framing. Posts up, blocks done, backfilled around the wall. So there's trusses, I think all the lumber's onsite. I think they're just waiting on steel. So hopefully it won't be too awful long. We'll have a building up. Our sidewalk project's moving along. They got North Monroe done, as well as the other ones they've been working on. I didn't see them anywhere today. Were they down at South Matt? That's right. He told me that.
And Adams.
Okay, great. They should be wrapping that up before long. Leaf pickup, we'll put a notice out Saturday. Today and tomorrow will pretty much be it for leaf pickup, and after that we'll be going to bag leaves. Sent out the landscape and solicitor RFPs. I assume everybody had a chance to review those. Is there any questions, comments? I assume we're ready to make a decision on both of those.
I thought that they were really close until I realized that the second one was two different prices, and then I was like, oh, they're not close at all.
Yeah. Pretty, pretty big difference.
Yeah.
So we would need a motion if you are prepared to do that at this time, to award those items.
I did have a question, because there was some confusion. So... For the one, for the quote for $13,247, when you break down it. So that's for the hanging baskets and the...
Yeah.
And... Now, when I looked at our budget, it breaks down into... Like $4,000 at the thing, and then the baskets are different. Is that... When you look at the appropriation thing, it breaks down in a certain way, so I was confused.
I assume it's just different line items.
It's how we did it this year. So this year, they submitted quotes to us for the hanging baskets, and then I asked them for a quote for the maintenance at the while, so, as well as the fall planting for Tree City. So I, I broke that, because they gave me three different quotes with three different amount, three different amounts. I put that in purchase orders that way this year, so that's the way I kind of wrote up the appropriations for next year. I'm sure it'll be broken out, like when we get down to the nitty-gritty with it and it's time to get started, I'm sure they'll give us a price for the baskets and a price for the...
Okay, but it would still amount to the 13?
Yeah.
Because you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
The one is broken down, it tells me this.
Right.
The one only tells me just the whole thing.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what it would stay at. It wouldn't be more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it couldn't. Correct.
Okay, they can't even, okay.
So do we want to do a motion for the solicitor first?
I would make a motion to award the contract to Mr. Hines.
Hofstadter?
Hofstadter?
Hi.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Hi.
And Khan?
Hi.
Welcome back, Bob.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to continue serving. One question. I assume that the new contract will be as of January 1st, because the other one was extended until then. Okay.
Yeah. And then we'll need a motion for the landscaping. Copper Leaf Group versus Roots Lawn Service.
I'll make a motion to approve the copper leaf quote for $13,247.
Last second.
That was Hofstadter?
Hi.
Is that you? Okay. Vaughn?
Hi.
Hofstadter?
Hi.
Kellogg?
Yes.
And Khan?
Hi.
Thank you. We got a streetlight request. The mayor was contacted about... There's, I went out and looked at it. There's no AEP poles on Close Street. There's, the closest secondary power is across Worcester Road, on the east side of Worcester Road. So to, to put a streetlight in, they can use the telephone company's poles, but we have to give power over to it. They didn't have secondary anywhere nearby. And have to set another pole to make, there's a tree in between where the pole on Worcester Road is and where, where the streetlight would go. So they have to run across and then over. So they quoted us around $6,000 to be able to put a light in there. I didn't... I, I personally don't know. I didn't want to make that decision on my own, but... Normally, if it's close to a sec, or, close to their secondary power, they just put the light up and it's no big deal, but this was a little over normal, so I wanted to run it by you guys.
There aren't any streetlights on Close Street?
No.
None?
There's, yeah, there is nothing on Close Street.
And so I was contacted by a lady on Close Street who said, "You know, you've been talking about letting us know if streetlights are out. We don't even have any." And I was like, wait, what? So I called Nate and I'm like, can we get a streetlight on Close Street? So that, that's how this all came about. There are none on Close Street.
And how far back on Close Street would it be?
This would get us back to the intersection with Matt Anthony.
Okay.
Which is right by the house where she lives.
Where she lives.
Be a good spot for it with the intersection right there.
To light it up a little bit.
So the full length of Close Street, there'd still just be a single?
Yeah, that's just for one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What happens when somebody else wants their section lit up?
Probably be looking about the same to go on down. If you want me to ask them to look at doing maybe three of them down the length of the street, we could do that, too.
It seems like an awful lot of money for a streetlight.
It is a lot of money for a streetlight.
Opening a door, a bunch of other people, it's like, streets aren't lit up.
Or alleys, if you've got a house in there.
Or alleys, or hard blocks, or, I mean...
We have added a lot in the last few years, trying to get them up to corporation limits and streets that never had any. Port Washington, East Jones Street, this year got done. Yeah, maybe that's something we look at. I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, but maybe we look at budgeting money for it and...
Yeah, I've actually thought, put in to, like I said, you set precedent.
Yeah.
Well, these people got a, we all know how this works. They asked, they're, they're arming, and so we'd like ours lit up.
Sure.
Yeah, there's a lot that are out, and why am I walking now?
Yeah, there are.
There's a lot of lights that are out, and I just know that there's no light. But I'd rather think about it, or, or open up a can, or just open enough precedent to a lot of people wanting a streetlight.
I, I don't, from a safety-ish aspect, I, I think it's a good thing to get lights out there. We just need to go about it in a logical way.
Well, and if we plan for it, then, you know, we could say, okay, we're gonna put lights here and here, and then, you know, maybe the following, you know.
But...
So that it's not a...
At some point, there shouldn't be a whole lot left.
Yeah, there should be.
Not lit. I don't think it's gonna be a huge project.
Is that something, Nate, that you or somebody can report back at some point? Let us know what needs to be done, or what your thoughts are on that?
Yeah.
Have a discussion on that.
We could drive around and kind of figure out the areas that we'd be focused on.
Maybe check some evening, drive around to... AEP fixing them, or when you call them?
Yeah, when we report them, they go on their list. They, they get to them as they can.
I actually had this number, because I double...
Yeah.
There's been one near your house out for a long time. We walk up, that stretch is very dark, and you've got the intersection, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll work on this and come back with more information. Chad was working on Millersburg Mobile Home Park. Do you wanna, he'd sent out 10?
They all, I mean, they just went to the actual owner, but there's not been a response yet, so...
Different properties needing some cleanup. There was other locations as well you've been working on and...
Yeah, up here, up around Christiansville, we had probably four to five appliances and two couches that have disappeared since the letter, so...
Good. That's good.
Okay, gotta, kind of a change of pace here. So Bobby, Chad, and I were talking about getting shirts made, but came up with this simple, just village of Millersburg, established 1815. We talked to Top Dog and Shoemaker Custom Apparel, got prices from both of them. So the way it works is you pay a setup fee for the, for the logo, and then we'd each buy our own individual, you know, if I want a vest or a pullover, or you want whatever. Once the logo's established, we, we'd each pay per garment, plus the cost of embroidery. I wanted to see if you guys are interested as well, if you'd want to be in on that.
I am. I think it'd be nice, like when we were at the parade, that would have been nice to have.
They have online catalogs that you just go in and get about anything you want. There's all kinds of options.
Does it have the village of Millersburg with the light post?
No, it's just a, it's just the village of Millersburg, established 1815.
What's that?
It's what it's called, a vintage look.
Oh. Just a simple...
I have one from, I think Andy was administering. It has, it, it looks like our letterhead.
The Opera House.
With the Opera House on it, which I really like it.
Yeah, that would be cool.
And I take really good care of it. I thought about bringing it in tonight, but, ah. But that's nice with the Opera House. I don't know if there's any way they could do that, but...
Possibly. The cost will go up.
It could do.
It's so much per thousand stitches. So the more you do, the more expensive. So what we had proposed was gonna be around $8 to $10 for embroidery on each shirt.
Oh, this is embroidered? Okay, the one I have is, I don't know what you call it.
Like screen printed?
It's a screen print.
Yeah.
It's, which you have to sort of take care of.
Yeah, you can't, yeah.
Right. Yeah, yeah, embroidered. It's a portion of the...
Whole different thing. So if you're all interested, we'll go ahead and get that set up, and then send out the catalog, and everybody can just get whatever they want. Is it, I guess I'm kind of asking, are you okay with us creating these shirts, number one? The logo, and then offer up the invitation?
Ten, if we put in the one order at once, it would be cheaper.
It would have, yeah.
That's another reason, that's another reason to talk to include all the council or anybody that wants...
Yeah, Dave, if you want one.
Dave, if you want three?
Different colors?
Yeah, you can get whatever you want. Yep.
But we'll put a lead person on that note, but all orders need to be one person.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'd be good.
There's huge, it's overwhelming. You start looking through the catalog, there's anything and everything, so, it's pretty cool. Couple other things. I talked to Judge Lee last week about the indigent burials. He asked if we had a preference on when that takes place, now that the legislation and everything, the policy's in place. I told him we don't have a preference, but he had a board meeting, the, the... Volunteer Guardians.
Volunteer Guardians.
Thank you. They had a meeting the following day. He called me back and said they'd like to wait till next spring, so... That's the plan at this point. Once, once they are ready to go, they'll let us know and we'll get that set up. Wanted to have, if you remember, they wanted to have kind of a service ceremony there when it's done, so... Once that's, that is set up, I'll let you guys know. The last thing we got, just... Late Friday, I got these renderings from Sign Design for our sign project we've been talking about. You can pass those around. The first two are the welcome signs at the entrances to town, and then the third is the proposed signs throughout here on our building. These would be on the HDPE material, the metal one. Yeah, no, it's not the, it'd be like, yeah, yeah, the green one.
Yeah.
They are heavy.
Are they two different design, so they're two different designs, or...
No, so, Natalie's just pointing out, they changed, here's, here's a picture of our current.
Okay.
They, they couldn't mimic the lantern exactly.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see.
They had to simplify it a little bit.
Okay.
You'll see it when you look at it.
Okay.
It's a very subtle change, I think.
Okay.
Jeez.
Yeah.
That was a design I thought you were maybe referring to on the logo with the shirt.
So, on the entrance signs, with installation and everything, I didn't, I didn't add that up, I'm sorry. Let me do that real quick here. I can tell you that the projecting sign out front, up on the wall, installed, would be $1,895. The wall sign would be $745. And then... The welcome signs would be... $8,015 apiece installed. That's new posts and hardware and everything. The signs are $4,300. Posts are around $1,700. And then the installation is $1,895.
That's pretty close to what we estimated it would be.
It is. Yeah. Bear in mind, there's, there's five of them, so...
And if they get, if people put graffiti on them, they wipe off.
Yeah.
They all wipe off.
Pass that around to you, if you want to see that. I guess my thought at this point, I think we can do the, the signs here, get those in place.
Yeah.
And then do we want to look once again? Do we want to do a couple of them for a couple of years? Or do we want to just budget the money and do them all at once? The, the welcome signs. So you can see in the picture of the one now, they're, they're not in great shape. They're peeling pretty bad. They're split. They're very open.
How much more are they gonna cost in two years?
Yeah.
Fair question. I don't know.
That's the question.
Which signs need replaced? Are there two that would need it really right now, that you think?
South, the south one, and... Pat, what do you think, as far as which of the, which are the worst of the entrance signs? The south and west, I think?
South and west, I believe.
South usually gets hammered.
Sun, whatever, sun.
Yeah.
We don't get a discount if we do them all four?
Good job.
Treats for prices.
Well, if you compare it to possible future prices, there's a discount.
Be nice just to get it all done.
It would. I agree.
It's gotta be a big...
So you got the north, south, east, west side, as you're coming into Millersburg, and you got the one on 241. Is that, okay?
Should we have any money budgeted for that?
Is that money already part of the budget?
We don't.
We have $15,000 set aside for signage.
Oh, we do?
And...
Oh, for next year.
Yeah, for next year.
Yeah. I thought you meant this year.
Oh, this year. I'm sorry. I thought we were talking last year.
Would that be next year, we...
What she's talking about, yes.
Yeah.
I was saying, I'm betting we can go through our funds and find enough to do the, the two here this year now.
Okay.
And then...
Oh, and then next year.
And then next year, finish it out.
Okay.
Looking at doing...
Just get it done. Look nice.
But that's not gonna be enough, though.
No. No, this is about the new entrance. Did you, were you still planning on doing a new entrance here for next year at the village hall? I just went by last year. But, yeah, so... Says new entrance. I don't, I think it was on the budget items sheet at some point, and we did, was it half and half anyway? So that's on here, too. So that's a total of 30, if we're not planning on doing anything with this. And then we can find. So...
Is that under appropriations, the operating, the, I saw that new entrance then, too.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that is.
Under, um, mosquito, you got mosquito spray, self-widely flower baskets.
It's down just a little further.
New signage $15K, new entrance $15K, what?
I think something was gonna be $30,000, and you said half and half at some point.
I was gonna ask you.
I wrote it down, that's all I know, but it's fine.
It says 15, routine maintenance, budget items, new signs $15K, new entrance $15K. What's that? What was new?
That's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
You don't know what that is?
Remembering what that was, so... So now it's percent. So...
Good as you may have left from our improvement share.
I, yeah, I'm not sure what that was about.
Do we, can we make the decision at the next, do we have to make the decision?
We can, yeah.
Can you look at that?
Do you want to go ahead with the ones here, or not?
On the, on the building, so the people, I, I said.
The two here.
Yeah.
We got identified.
$1,800 and $700.
Okay. So we'll get that going and then figure out what we're planning on there.
I was gonna, I had highlights, I didn't know what it was.
I'm wondering if that was for the work we've, we had done, and it just got carried out.
And just stayed on?
Oh. There was something I divided into. You said do half this year, half next, and this was, I don't know. You're letting yourself up.
All right. I think that's all I've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Chief? No, you're good. All right. Bobby?
Okay, what do I have? Basically, just appropriations. I think we can have a discussion about that. Sent that out to everybody. What questions do you guys have? What observations? What concerns? Let's hash it out.
Bobby, at what point during the appropriation process did the, all the paving get dropped off?
When we started talking about all of the gas lines in town being replaced. When that became a major discussion throughout this year, that is when Nate said, hold up on paving until we know where they're gonna be, when they're gonna be placed, and then maybe we can follow them around and, and plan on the paving after that. But if we don't know where they're gonna be tearing up streets and alleys, doesn't make much sense to spend that money.
I, I don't know that what they're doing now, their meter work, if that's delaying their plan to replace their underground system as well. I don't know.
So, so there are future plans for more underground stuff?
Like what was done in front of my house?
Yeah, that's what they've told us.
Yeah. So they had told us they wanted to, within, was it 10 years?
Yeah, they have a 10-year plan.
That's what's going, that's what they, that's what Stoller mentioned, and they warned me about, when they were digging up my, my, in front of my house.
To replace their...
But, but that, that work that they did in April at your house, at your, in front of your place, and then down in front of Glenwood Apartments, and I think there was one other place over by Port...
Well, they did it in my neighbor's house, too, so their, their house, my house.
But that was all early spring.
Yes.
And I don't, they've not, they've been completely focused on everybody else's houses since then.
The meter.
Yeah, the meter replacement.
Yeah.
All right, so, am I gonna ask some questions?
Sure.
All right. So I was going through appropriations. Because this is concerning to me. When we look at the front page of the 2025 Village Appropriations Summary, and when I look at column 2025 Estimated Revenue, And then I look at 2025 Expense Appropriation, that's $6,100,900. that's six million, one hundred and ninety thousand and fifteen dollars, that's an almost a million dollar difference. So it's, it concerns me because we've got to look ahead. So I started looking at everything. And I'm looking at things in the budgets and all that, and so when I, looked at areas of spending and all that. So the budget item for the request, and this got talked about at the last meeting, and I kind of was catching what was being talked about, for the Ford F five fifty truck plow spreader. So I wanted to be educated about something like that, so I did go down to the street department and I talked to Pat. And I asked Pat to come tonight because I wanted him to explain. I worry that people think, you know, the village wants to buy a nice new red shiny truck. But he's very good at explaining, and I promised him that I would always never just say something without, so I went down there. We looked around at things, he explained his thought process, which was very, very thoughtful and, you know, when a guy says to me, I want people to treat these trucks like they were yours, that, that is something that you want to hear. So do you care if Pat explains to us all about his logic behind? Do you mind, Pat?
No.
Okay, because you can explain it better.
Yeah, well, initially the, the truck that we're kind of, we want to keep it, but we want to put it in. Sort of a retirement.
I'm sorry, I didn't tell you.
The truck that we would be putting this new truck into is a thirteen F three fifty, which we use for salt plowing. It don't, the truck is not bad enough to completely get rid of it. But it is getting some age on it, and it's going to need some repairs. What we thought, our thought process was to move it to like a secondary and a backup, which in turn would free it up for in the wintertime. Because once we put the salt boxes in those two one-ton trucks, they're tied up for the winter. And we use it at the cemetery also, which I guess, the truck we have, we can still get the dirt out, but it's four trips in and out to a grade compared to two trips. If that makes sense, with a one-ton compared to just a pickup. It would be used for that. But if it means us still getting the F five fifty, we could retire the nineteen ninety-six dump truck that we have. There again, it's nice to have an older dump truck if we have huge chunks of asphalt or concrete. We're not as worried about beating up that truck as we are our brand-new Mack. If we got something rough to use with, we, we would rather use that ninety-six. But there again, if, if you guys decide that it needs, the five fifty needs to replace a truck, we need to get rid of one, that would be the, the one, nineteen ninety-six dump truck.
But you'd like to keep that?
At least for a little while. If we see it start nickling by, yeah, it's time to go, but.
I appreciate you telling us that because I don't, I don't care if you want to keep it, use it, I think it's a great idea to, I mean, get it all digged up rather than the new stuff.
Right, and it's paid for, the village, it's paid for it. Let's try and get as many years out of usage of it as we can. It's my, that's my thought process there too.
And he explained miles are low, because around here you're going to have low mileage.
Most of our trucks are, are low miles.
Right.
Probably only hours, if you pull hours, hours on them, they're going to be high in hours. But, um, but yeah, as far as mileage, you can't really judge that. And then with them being, I mean, that ninety-six has been sold ever since it was brand-new. And the same with the thirteen, you know, thirteen, you know, we're talking eleven years old already. So. I guess that's, it's kind of maybe just a process. Don't get caught with all of them going down at once.
Yeah. No, that's good. I have a question for you. Nate and I had a conversation this week. We were talking about changing the way, talking to council and changing the way we budget. And instead of asking for a wish list, which is the way it's been done forever, giving you a number and saying, this is what you have to budget with, you decide how to spend it. Would that be easier for you, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's something we can talk about or look at.
I just think it's, you know what you need. Nate Skolmich knows what he needs.
Right.
You know? And then we, we come and we look at all this stuff and we just look at numbers. And then once we see, you know, well, this is way more than this, so what are we going to cut out, you know? I don't want to cut out things that you need to have.
Right.
You know, and you know better than we do what you need. So that might be a conversation that we need to start.
And we, I talked to Bobby about it as well, think it'd make your life easier.
Yeah. I look at, I look at the street department though, and, and like if you look at, at the line for street department on the summary, um, that I gave each of you guys, um, you know, their estimated revenue for street department, it, it, it's always going to be less than their operational costs. And, and this, this new truck is coming out of general transportation, out of the general fund. So, street department doesn't have a whole lot of wiggle room. So the only time something like that is, is, it may be going to be tricky, is Pat or the street department, if they need something, and I come back with them, at them with, you know, here you go about forty thousand dollars to spend, and they need a new truck. So that's, you know, that's where we'll still have to really, you know, discuss and figure out what's needed. But I think that that's, I mean, that's okay with me, if we change the way that we do it, we have to be able to vary off of that a little bit too, especially for street department, um, things like that.
The other part of our conversation I want to bring up is that we would still report back to you guys with, you know, once the number is set, we would then give you the list of what we're planning to do for next year.
With that money, yes, with that money, yeah.
That's what the wish list to me showed, was what's not necessarily now, but what's on the horizon.
We'd still do our long-term planning, that kind of thing, but it'd be a lot easier for all of us to have a number we're working off of versus here's everything we can possibly do.
You're getting two.
It's, yeah, yeah.
And we'll pick.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, I encourage, I mean, every time I, I've probably seen him a few times this year, and it's always, he's more than willing to stop what he's doing, he doesn't roll his eyes at me. And takes the time and makes sure I understand, and, and it's very clean, nice, well-cut drive, so.
Yeah.
And I want, and I appreciate you coming and.
Thanks.
Explaining.
Thank you, Pat.
No problem.
Thank you.
Um, so Andrea, I wanted to, um, to, y- you said when you look at this, um, you know, the summary sheet, and I agree. I, I wish those numbers were more even. But I will say this, each year, and we went through this last year, Karen pulled a whole bunch of reports and everything. We typically spend about eighty-five percent of what we appropriate. And to cut it too close is, that is just going to ma, that's nuts to do that. You don't want to make it dollar for dollar too close.
I understand that.
So the difference between the column from estimated revenue to our estimated expenses or appropriations for next year is fifteen percent. And that was completely accidental. I was having a conversation about this the other day, I crunched those numbers and went, I'll be, it's fifteen percent, because I don't like those numbers either.
Okay.
But, um, knowing that we appropriate more, I'll give you an example of, of one area where appropriations are padded, and the reason that I did it. So, um, personal services, which is wages, and fringe benefits, which is everything from health insurance to life insurance and all that stuff. I cut that pretty close last year, Karen just let me do that, and that's okay, that's, that was a very good learning experience because about two, three weeks ago, um, I had to move all kinds of things around. I had to switch accounts for different employees and get them figure out what was, where the money was for the rest of the year. And move all kinds of things around that I have to undo at the beginning of the year, so I just made a ton more work for myself. At a time that I don't really have time to make a lot of work for myself. So, um, so it was suggested to me to take those numbers, which are, which are pretty firm, say wages, and I know what the health insurance and dental insurance is going to cost, and life insurance and all those benefits. If I take those and add about five percent to that, that is going to pad that to the point where I will not have to scramble and spend an entire day, or whatever it was, um, moving accounts around and, and moving money around from, you know, this line to this line. It's just a lot of extra stuff that we can avoid doing, knowing we're very likely not going to spend that extra five percent. We pretty much know where everybody's going to be at pay-wise and what benefits are going to cost us, but.
Revenue will go down when jobs leave from the school.
Sure, sure, that, and that's.
And, and I'm just, is there a way to do an every six-month meeting and looking at where your stuff is due?
Uh, yeah, that, that.
I know the county does that.
Yeah, that is a discussion that, that we had too. We have a, a committee for budget and finance, is that what it's called?
Yep, budget finance.
Um, I, I really would not mind at all meeting with you folks, whoever's on that committee, and talking about this stuff a couple of times a year, maybe, um, at some point before it's time to do budget, so sometime prior to mid-year, and then again, prior to new appropriations, I'm, I'm good with that.
I think it's a good idea, it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we talked for probably an hour and a, close an hour and a half on Friday about the budget, and, we, we talked about having a meeting, probably may get income tax out of the way for her before we have a meeting with the budget.
Right, yeah, we don't want to.
Like May, May, June.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
I like that.
To meet, but, I mean, looking, looking at the numbers, you know, sport, what, what we looked at Friday, I mean, we have to spend a million dollars yet this year to, to meet our appropriation based on what we've spent so far. So, and I'm assuming you guys aren't going to spend in the next six weeks a million dollars and.
How many T-shirts?
Chad's ready, Chad's ready to spend that money.
So Andrea, just whatever's working, when I first saw this for the first year, I had the same thoughts as you did. You know, it just, it didn't make a lot of sense. Then I, I started to realize that.
You've seen it in the news.
And sometimes projects run over from one year to the next because you can't. You know, whenever you had paving and.
Well, paving wasn't even on, I mean, that's taken off, so you've got paving off, and, and, and I guess all, all I would say is we can think about this in six months, but when revenue does, you know, there may be times where the departments will have to come in a little less, I mean, like, we're going to lose revenue with the school, I mean, we're going to, let's be honest, we're going to lose revenue.
Yeah. Well, and wages and benefits are going to continue to keep going up.
Insurance keeps going up, and that's your biggest thing is wages, and like you said, insurance is.
We're very lucky, I just wanted to tell you that at the, um, fire department board meeting, um, they were quoted fifteen percent. And I told them to go back and ask, and they went back and asked, and they said, nope, it's fifteen percent. So we got very, very lucky, and I don't really know how we did, but, so they're looking at doing something different next year because of that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I do like the idea of the finance audit committee meeting a couple of times next year, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Bobby, I'm always amazed at the time that Andrew goes into this, I cannot imagine, but I'm going through all these numbers. And there were just a few scenarios where I started to add up things, and thinking, that, that's not right, I screwed it up. And that's just a few little minor, you know, places that I look, but I appreciate the, the time and effort and energy that you put into it.
It's, it's, it's a little bit fun, I'm not going to lie, it's, it's a little bit fun. It's just in the middle of doing all this and looking at all these numbers is when seven hundred date tax letters went out and the phone was ringing off the hook, so that made it a little challenging, but. Oh, I did crunch a number about that today too, about taxes, I'll just interject this real quick. So I told you guys initially that about seven hundred letters went out. And I really hadn't had the chance to even try to guess how many returns had come in since then. I did that today, and I shouldn't have, because it was very discouraging. So, a hundred fifty-four people have filed since I sent out those letters. So, that's not great statistics of getting people to file their taxes, so I'm going to keep working on that. I'm not really sure what to do, so I'll keep working at that.
Any idea how this compares to prior years?
I don't, I, the only thing I, I really know is that when I, I called my lifeline Karen and I said, I'm getting seven hundred eight non-fileer letters, this can't be right, right? And she said, hmm, that could be right, I mean, so it wasn't crazy far off.
Was unprecedented, okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions for Bobby?
You good?
Okay, all right, Bob?
I just got the classified ordinances for this year today, which is just about right on time. Karen would always give these to me at this meeting, and then I'd look at them, and then, um, usually that everything's fine, but there has, they have occasions where they made a mistake. So, you know, give me till the next meeting, I'll look at it, make sure it's fine, and then we can get, get the passed and approved for next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good, we can do that. Anything else?
That's it.
No? Okay. Um, upcoming meetings, we have, like Nate said, designer review board planning and zoning on December fourth. And no other committee meetings that I know of until after the first of the year, just two council meetings. Committee reports. I do have a couple of interesting things. Calls from District One, calls to District One by the Village of Millersburg, there have been five hundred to date inside the village. So I thought that was interesting. In October, there were sixty-three. They installed six smoke dete- detectors. And they had a complaint out at the former Terrace View, um, nursing home area, so I just thought you guys might like to be interested in that.
I was impressed with, I listened to the radio, so Lieutenant Brian Peterman, did he just become a lieutenant? Well, what I was impressed with was he gave a report about, they had applied for grant money and Walmart helped him, and, and I like seeing that, and he's looking like they're looking for some more, and that's what, that's what should be doing. That, that's impressive to be looking for the money, to be getting things. And so when he talked about getting that grant money, Walmart helped. And if they're looking at more areas like that, I, I like seeing that, so I want to make sure, I'm always great to criticize, but, um, I want to give kudos to the, for them for looking for money where they can get money and get things helped by him.
Yeah, that's good, I gave kudos to, um, acting chief Brian Rafferty at our meeting because he has been going through everything that they pay out, and he has found some, um, old things that they're still paying on that they haven't used in years, that it's twenty-five hundred here and four thousand there, and he's been finding all these savings, and I appreciate that too. Because that's tax dollars, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, they're, they're doing well. All right, old business. I have just a couple of things. Twenty-five mile per hour signs for our new twenty-five mile per hour zones, are, are we going to get those out?
I, ODOT's doing those.
Oh, ODOT's doing those.
I requested that they do those and also verify that all the other state routes are properly marked.
Okay.
Where they're supposed, according to their record.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they are working on that.
Okay.
Nate, a, a few meetings ago, we had talked about additional signage on Port Washington at Glen Drive to direct trucks onto Glen Drive.
Yes.
Is that something that is still in the works, or?
We, uh, yes. We haven't done any.
Okay.
We got these up and haven't done any more.
Okay.
Let's not direct them on Port Washington.
Yeah, correct.
The township did get there.
At the other end.
The far end, and then we got the one up on Jackson, or.
We put a, threw trucks on top of the Port Washington sign.
Yeah.
At Jackson.
Right.
And then we come to the T at the end of Glen Drive, we've got one there too.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I guess I'm envisioning as they're coming up. Okay, I, I guess I'm envisioning as they're coming up Port Washington, when they get to Glen, they would see another one to tell them that they have to turn onto Glen Drive.
Well, we have one at the entrance of Port Washington at, um, Jackson and Port Washington.
No, if they're northbound.
Yeah, if they're northbound, coming.
If they're northbound, and they're already going to Port Washington, I'm not sure where the township has.
They supposedly put one down at the other end.
The far end.
But they're not, three trucks aren't supposed to be on there.
When you come to the T, we've got one on that signboard across from it with an arrow pointing both ways that says go through trucks.
Okay. Okay.
Obviously, the ones that's making deliveries aren't going to listen to it anyway, but.
Right, right. Let's not have three trucks, yeah?
Right.
Okay.
I wish the box trucks and the people that have terrorists would just have common sense to not go down up and down South Washington Street. Especially township. That's all I've got to say.
I would like to give a big thank you to Taylor Sigler, our HDM Director, Mark Bowley, our Executive Director of the Holmes County Historical Society, Dale Obringer, President Lions Club, the West Holmes Chamber Choir, and all the volunteers, um, for each of those organizations, as well as all the downtown businesses who stayed open late on Saturday night for Mary Millersburg, the chocolate walk and the tree lighting. It was a wonderful evening. It was a little chilly, but there were a lot of people downtown. We talked to a lot of people, there were a lot of people from out of town. There were lines in, inside the businesses. If you just drove through town, you would think there weren't many people here, but they really were. They were all inside where it was warm. I hope that we can keep up our partnerships with everybody, because it's really working well. Newtown Gallery was the winner of the People's Choice Award for the Christmas window contest. Mark had, um, he said him and his nieces and nephews strung, um, cotton balls on fishing line, and it looks like snow falling in front of his window, and it's really cute. He's got a train going around. It's really cute. And, um, the winner of the judges' choice award was Modern Farmhouse. And, uh, we liked it because she had two trees, a lot of lights, and this bicycle laden with gifts, and then a sign about shopping local, and we, we thought that that was awesome. So anyway, all the windows looked wonderful. I hope more people do it next year. We even had some out-of-town businesses that decorated windows, and it was, it was a wonderful evening. So I think that that was awesome. Any other old business?
Yeah, man.
Yes?
Okay. Couple of months ago, I've been and asked about the trees downtown, and also some of the trees being trimmed. The only thing I've seen trimmed or cut down was a tree on Port Washington and Glen Drive. And all the trees downtown look good, what the Lions Club could decorate it. The rest of them are terrible. We got two-footers, we got big trees, we got all those berries all over the place. I hope the people in the village look at some of these trees and make arrangements to have trimmed, pruned, or something done with them, because they are terrible. And the American Hall up there, right in front of their front door, is one of these great big berry trees. The people come down, they go to a restaurant, they go shopping, tracking berries right back up in the building. We need to make arrangements and not wait until spring, because now is when everything is dormant, from now until the middle of March. So we need to do some of the trimming and pruning right now, make arrangements to get the down, the downtown looks good, other than that. And people were here, like you said, Saturday night. The people were here, but when there was more than two or pe, two or three people standing on the sidewalk, they couldn't get around because the trees hanging out over the sidewalk.
Yep.
The hotel, and I'm going to keep going, the hotel up there has trees right now, as you can see, it's covering the signs. It'll endure, once the tree limbs get out on there, they'll be all covered up. We had nice-looking baskets last year on the poles. We're going to have some new ones this year. The one on the east side of the hotel had a vine growing out of it, and it grew into the tree, so you couldn't, you couldn't see it. So I hope the tree committee finally makes a decision not to wait till July to do something. Start working now, make some plans on getting rid of some of these trees. Some of the merchants have told me that there's rumors that they're going to pull these, some of these trees. I wish they would start, because, uh, there has to be another tree out there that could be planted that doesn't leave the berries. If you walk down through now, when they're, all the leaves are off, and look at the ton of the berries that are on there, there has to be something else that can be done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree, Dave. The, the, the trees that were planted years ago are a mess. They really are. So that is.
But we're still going back and planting more.
Well, however, however, the, the new, the newer varieties of crabs don't drop the, the berries the way the old ones do.
Where can they go?
The birds eat them.
They don't dissolve.
The birds eat them. They hang on until the birds eat them.
Okay, then what do you got?
Well, that's, they fly somewhere else and do that.
Those are field trees. If you plant it on one side of the field or out where the birds can feed off of them and everything else, and not the people track them. The maple tree at the parking lot at CS Bank is crooked, so crooked it's grown to the north or to the east, that one tree had either been staked or trimmed up or something. And, and you can go around on the other street, I just hit the main street, but there's a lot of side streets that have got trees or suckers coming out of the bottom and growing out over the sidewalk.
I, I would love to replace all the trees.
Hours of work that can be done, if it can be affordable.
I'd love to replace all the trees in the downtown. It's just a question of what, what type, because that's, there's, there's got to be some magic combination of no fruit and low maintenance, but that's.
The ORDC and Musser could probably help a great deal if somebody could contact.
They could probably give you a list.
Well, we've, we've been in contact with the ODNR, uh, the Joe Meglin, or whatever his name is, uh, has provided some guidance as well for trees. But again, we're still looking at a larger streetscape project of some kind that would include trees. So it's, it's on our radar, Dave. Thank you.
Any other old business? New business? I have one thing for new business. I was contacted last week. Megan Stryker and I are going to work together and do an iSpy game for Christmas for kids in town. We're gonna look for, um, unique Christmas decorations, and we're going to make a list. And so it will be something free that parents can drive their kids around Millersburg and look for these unique Christmas decorations. So, um, we would like to have the list out by December the first. We wanted to wait until after Thanksgiving, because we know that there are some diehard people who do not decorate until the day after Thanksgiving. So, um, if you have a unique Christmas decoration, or your neighbor, when you look out the window, they have something unique, please let us know, because, um, we would lo, love to add that to our iSpy game. We'd like to have, um, eight to ten north of Jackson and eight to ten south of Jackson to cover the entire village. So I think that that'll be a fun, a fun thing for parents and kids to do, um, this Christmas. So I think that's fun. Anything else? This week is Thanksgiving. I hope each and every one of you is, are thankful for your blessings. Also, remember, there is no shame in wearing elastic pants on Thanksgiving Day. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to consider the compensation of public employees for the fiscal year 2025?
Make a motion, con, second.
Can we do that with only council, mayor, and solicitor to start with?
Absolutely. Go on.
Aye.
House Senator.
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Zivon. All right, thank you, have a wonderful evening.